Brian, do we have more chairs in the back for people?
Yeah.
The two chiefs are gonna go get some more.
Yeah.
Two chiefs?
The two chiefs are gonna go get some more.
1.0 or 2.0?
Yep, 2.0, 2.0, yep. Oh, just about retired.
Okay, let's go ahead and get started with the April 15th City Council meeting. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Bastian.
Present.
Clark, Fish, Housman.
Here.
Parsons.
Present.
Wakefield.
Mayor Lundberg.
Here.
Okay, any changes or additions to the agenda? If not, can I have a motion to approve as presented?
Second.
Motion is second to approve the agenda as presented. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. We have minutes from March 28th and April 1st that we need to approve.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion is second to approve March 28th and April 1st minutes. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Bills and claims submitted with your agenda. Any questions, comments?
Need to approve.
Second.
Motion is second to approve the bills and claims is submitted with the agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. All right, now is the time for anybody that wants to address the board. Public comments or anything that you want to address the board with would be appropriate now? Yes, ma'am. Yeah, you gotta turn it on.
Haven't done this before, so.
Perfect.
Hi, everyone, my name's Stephanie Peterson and I'm from Brandon, although I do live, I have a Brandon address, but I do live right outside the city limits. I have a company called Fruit of the Coop and I raise pasture-raised chickens and I sell pasture-raised eggs to restaurants in Sioux Falls. I also sell my eggs direct to the consumer through Cherry Rock Farm, just south on Highway 11. And I'm here to just address the council and ask you to consider adopting and working on writing an ordinance on allowing the residents of Brandon to keep backyard chickens within the city limits. And I also, through my company, I teach backyard chicken keeping classes through Sioux Falls Community Ed. I do a lot of free classes throughout the region at expos, at fairs, even at Tractor Supply on responsible animal husbandry and the appropriate way to care for backyard chickens in a clean manner and in a, you know, respectful manner of your neighbors. So, I do have contact with a lot of people in the Brandon area who have expressed to me their, you know, interest in keeping backyard chickens. And I think it's kind of like a thing that is definitely sweeping the country and I just kind of wanted to express my thoughts on that. Obviously, I support it. I'm a crazy chicken lady, so, but don't hold that against me. But I do think that it's important in our time of, in the way our country is being run that people know where their food is coming from. They want to know where it's coming from, they want to know how it's raised, and what better than raising it in your own backyard? Whether that's, you know, having a garden, but also having a few hens that would provide eggs for you. So I think that can be done in a very responsible manner. And I think if the council would consider, you know, setting up an ordinance that would set up a process for residents to go through, some hoops to go through in order to do that, whether that be permits or, you know, licensing, maybe some education, that sort of thing, you know, you're not just gonna have randoms just going out and buying chickens, you know. I think that you'll, if you set up a system that makes sense and is reasonable, you'll get residents who are serious about it and take it seriously and will do it in a responsible manner to their neighbors. So I think that that's something that I'd love for you guys to consider. I also think it's a great way to educate your children, show them where their food comes from, teach them responsibility of caring for an animal. So, and I also would offer to the city, you know, I am available and more than happy to, for free, teach chicken classes, you know, a couple times a year to people or offer classes associated with getting a permit, you know, however you want to set it up, but I would be available for that. And I'm also available for any questions you have this evening, specifics on the issue. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Shawna Goldammer and I'm a resident of Sioux Falls. I do not keep chickens, but I did have a community-wide discussion or helped have that happen in Sioux Falls. And so, I think this is a great topic for you to put together maybe a committee of the city council and invite the entire community to weigh in on this issue. In Sioux Falls, we did that, we took about six months, met as a committee and studied a variety of urban agriculture topics, including keeping chickens. We did come up with an ordinance that was acceptable to both the proponents and opponents and had, have had little or no consternation with keeping of chickens in Sioux Falls. So with that, I would be happy to answer any questions that you might have, how we rolled in Sioux Falls and how we opened it up for everybody to come up with a compromise ordinance and do allow backyard chickens in Sioux Falls. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Kevin Smith. I am a member of the city of Brandon, used to work for the city of Sioux Falls. I don't keep chickens, but just to follow up on what Shawna said that several years ago, and it's been several years since the city adopted the ordinance to allow the limited keeping of animals in town. Having managed the code enforcement program for the city, we would routinely receive between 5,000 and 6,000 complaints a year, mostly property maintenance, nuisance vegetation, sidewalks, no removal. I think the most the city ever received from animal control was maybe 12 after the ordinance was adopted. So if there, if there are concerns, as Shawna pointed out, having a community discussion about it is a great idea because every side needs to be heard, but ultimately sustainability and I think urban agriculture is here to stay where we live and from an enforcement standpoint, the things we used to deal with were mainly property-related and had very little problems once that ordinance was in place. I'll just leave you with that, thanks.
Thank you, Kevin.
I'm Shannon Olson. I am a Brandon resident and I just wanted to say that I would love to keep backyard chickens at my house. I love having my family know where their food comes from. We have a huge garden in our backyard and for our meat, usually we go hunting up north a bit and we get between five and eight deer tags a year. So pretty much we know where all of our food comes from and I think it would be great to teach my kids how to care for chickens and know that too, I guess. Thanks.
Hi, Council. Thanks for your time tonight. My name's Wyatt Erlacher. I live on Birchwood Avenue in Brandon here. I had the honor of working with Shawna on the Urban Ag Task Course when I lived in Sioux Falls and we spent over a year, I think the first six months were spent on taking input on community gardening and then the next six months on the keeping of animals. And a lot of concerns came up, you know, when I lived in Sioux Falls, I had a flock of six chickens and, you know, it was great, our neighbors liked them, you know, it was a really positive thing in the neighborhood, you know, the kids would all come around and like check them out, so it was a super positive thing. But when we took input from the community, we heard a lot of these concerns and I think there's just a lot of myths out there about, you know, the keeping of animals and chickens in particular. My experience, that really hasn't come to pass, you know. We host Tour de Coop, which is kind of an opportunity for people to see urban chicken setups in Sioux Falls. They do that once a year and really, it really just displays like all of the care and, you know, concern people have for their coops and their yards and how it complements their landscaping. So it is, you know, it really ties into that beautification of urban spaces. You know, and as far as just the noise and other concerns about that, in comparison to dogs, I mean, my neighbors, when we first moved into our house, they had three large dogs and they're barking out there every day and, you know, our chickens, as long as you don't have roosters, they're quiet, you know, that wasn't, that wasn't a concern. And I think Animal Control said last year, in 2018, they had one complaint and when they followed up on that, it was unfounded. So, a lot of those concerns really have proved unfounded and a lot of those concerns have not come to pass. So I just want to say I'm available if, you know, during this process, if we choose to move forward, I'd like to be available to, you know, provide input as far as what that process looked like along with Shawna and, you know, just kind of provide that background and education. There's so many cities around the country that are making this work and, you know, I see no reason why Brandon can't, can't follow that lead, so, thanks for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Hi, Dave in Sandy Elafson. We live 1102 North Chestnut. Good idea for the chickens, but we're here for another situation or another question that we had for the council. We're wondering what's the current status of the water towers? We understand that in May of 2019, they were supposed to begin construction and that's the last we've heard of it. Can anybody answer that?
Tammy's really good at that.
Okay.
The water towers right now, we are looking at possibly bidding them out in the fall. So they are still in the plans, but we're still working through kind of a peer review and making sure that we have all the details correct on it before we go to bid.
Okay.
Excuse me. Since we live right across the road where the east water tower's gonna go, we noticed they were out with a truck and they were out there for like a week doing soil samples.
Right.
Can you tell us about that, you know?
Those soil samples, they're pretty, pretty standard. What they did was they just looked at the soils just to make sure that we could design the foundation correctly and it was just for the design part of it.
So, the results on it were just for design?
Right.
The soil sample results or the compaction results were what, Tammy? What were the, the compaction results for the gentleman that we talked to that were up there doing the, with the compaction rig? Said that they were doing soil samples.
Right, yep. And that's just so that we know how far down to put the foundation and how much concrete we're gonna need and how much rebar, that sort of thing.
No problem with the soil there?
No.
Because our roads have shown, you know, a lot of problems, they're gonna be having a lot of traffic on them? And was the city working with the township to get those roads repaired so that if they are going to bid those out and have the trucks come through there? Because our road's been closed, we haven't even been able to get...
They won't deliver the mail to us.
Mail, so, I understand and, you know, the township is saying, well, you know, trying to work with the city on it and...
So, as far as Redwood, the city is working with the township. City crews have been out helping to try to repair that road. Rally here?
Do you know when it'll be open?
Do you have an update on that rally?
Yeah, I just talked to Mike Gross today. He stated that they're gonna try and get a skid loader in there and do a little removal of some of the soils underneath. That road is put on black dirt, so there's very minimal amount of gravel and crushed concrete on there. So they're gonna try and rebuild the base a little bit, especially in the really soft spots. We're hoping that we don't get a whole lot of rain come up here Wednesday or Thursday. That's not gonna help, but as for the construction of the water towers, I think the city had some type of agreement when we talked about doing that, we were gonna help the township with the maintenance of the road a little bit, so. They're gonna come in and out one direction, so we'll take, we'll help take care of part of the maintenance on the road.
The road on Chestnut's also a problem.
Yeah.
So, any heavy equipment coming in?
We've dealt with the one on Redwood a little bit more than the one on Chestnut, so, I'm working with the township a little bit on that one, so.
And just to clarify, these are township roads and so we are partnering with them and trying to help them as much as we can to get that open, but it is their responsibility, it's their jurisdiction.
We understand that. You know, we, though, are longtime residents, we know that when they were going to develop the homes for the golf, above the golf courses, years ago, before your time, but we talked to the city then about the amount of traffic that was gonna be on those gravel roads and that it was not gonna be able to take the amount of traffic that was on it. It's been a problem ever since those homes have been, with traffic, with the speed, with the number, with the bumps, you know, it's outrageous to try to get in or out of our place into Brandon or into Sioux Falls and, you know, I know that's not your problem, it's the township's road.
Yeah, it's the township road and until the homeowners want to annex into the township, it's the township road and they have the responsibility for the roads and the speed limits and all of that, so that's not something we can control. The city helps them upon occasion. We don't have to, but we do, that's their road and I know they have meetings too that you can go to. And yes, we do have an informal agreement with the township when there starts to be development of that water tower, that we're going to work with them to help them on the township roads that may be affected, but that's...
So unless the landowners want to pay to pave that road before construction, that road's not gonna be paid for the heavy equipment that's gonna come in to...
There's no plan on paving the road. It's a dirt road, it's a township road.
What about the amount of traffic, though, that is on it? Obviously, the 600 to 700 cars that drive on it are not the rural local residents, they're the Brandon community, so there's some...
When we went to the court, we had all these issues discussed with the court. The court is allowing us to build that, on that property. We've talked with the township about the road condition and we'll work with the township once it gets started to maintain some of that road. So, we've discussed with the Brandon Township doing that and repairing it and during the construction, so we will continue to do that when that gets starting to build. But in terms of a couple different issues you're talking about, just general wear and tear in the road, that's the township's responsibility. When it comes to the construction, the city is working with the township on those issues.
Back to the first question, please. So, the water towers are being rebid or redesigned, is that correct?
They're not being redesigned, they're just, they're still on the design phase.
Let me cut you off here, Tammy, I think we should, this isn't a debate time here, it's just a public comment, so I don't like to get back and forth on the debate. We can go in and we can handle this administratively, I think if you just wanted to make an appointment with Tammy, so we don't have to...
All right then, thank you very much.
Perfect, thank you. Yes, sir.
Hello.
Hello.
Thank you very much. My name's Bill Rezak. Excuse me, this is Luke Hartman. I'm the president of the Brandon Valley Mat Cats, he's vice president of Brandon Valley Mat Cats. First of all, we want to thank you for access and use to McCarty Park last year for, we did our first annual SummerSlam wrestling tournament. That was July 19th last year. It was very successful. Last year, we had about 90 wrestlers for it. It's kind of the culmination of all of our summer wrestling camps throughout the year and we're looking at doing that again this year. The date that we've kind of elected as our last camp is the 24th and then 25th of July would actually be SummerSlam. It's one of the only ones around the state or region, it's an outdoor wrestling tournament, so we laid out two wrestling mats in McCarty Park. We do have printouts, if you wanted to see them, on how we laid it out last year. And you'll see on there, we have two blue squares, that's where we ended up laying the mats. We had a food truck out there. Had a number of, like I said, 90 wrestlers come. Farthest actually was Ohio. We advertised this on Track Wrestling and they were cutting up their family vacation and so they stopped in Brandon, South Dakota for a day to go to the camp and do the wrestling tournament on their way to Mount Rushmore and everything else. So it was a very unique event. Really, all we asked for from the city or city council is, one, obviously for permission to use the park and, two, last year they did an extra spray for bugs just because obviously it's a pretty bug and rich environment down there, so.
Might be worse this year.
Might be a little worse this year, you never know. Hopefully, McCarty Parks...
Hopefully, we can get it.
Yeah, hopefully, McCarty Park will be okay by then, too.
I would imagine you guys have been through this before, any problems, Brian, or...
Right.
Scheduling. Yeah, we'll put it on the agenda next and try to work it in with the scheduling, but if it's been done before and it sounds like it was successful, I'm sure we'll continue the program. Okay, excellent. Thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate your input. Anyone?
Hello, TJ Cameron, 2417 East Lopez Lane. I did have one quick question about the agenda, but then I have a bigger message I want to address. Is, will the meeting be reopened for 15B after executive session? I noticed there's something on there for Ward 3 that could affect our ward. It just, I also saw the council packet that there's gonna be some discussion and then that there's a, something after executive session?
That will be an open session, yes.
Okay, so, we just kind of wait outside?
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor Lundberg. On a very positive note, I did want to send out a thank you to multiple council members that sent me good wishes with my medical recovery, so thank you very much. You did that on your own will and I really greatly appreciate it, things went well, so thank you so much for that. And I also wanted to take a moment to thank everybody that was a coordinator and all the volunteers that helped to make this last election such a success and record turnout for a Brandon mayor-only election. I think it was fantastic and a lot of work goes into that, so thank you so much. I also wanted to congratulate Mr. Mayor Lundberg on his win. Looking forward to your leadership, thank you so much. Also wanted to thank Mr. Wakefield for running. Regardless of the outcome, I wanted to acknowledge that I believe your heart has always been in the right place and thank you so much for running. I also wanted to thank Ms. Housman and Mr. Bastian for your service. Thank you so much. I understand that you guys have decided not to run, but greatly appreciate your service, so thank you very much. It's probably the last meeting or one more, so thank you very much, means a lot to the community. Welcome, Mr. Weir. Appreciate you being here tonight and welcome to the community. I just wanted to take one moment to address the 20% of voters that showed up and voted for Mr. Wakefield. I hope that you look at this as your voice being heard. Now, I hope you also rally behind Mr. Lundberg and our city council. I truly believe this council and Mayor Lundberg will value your input and take your concerns seriously if those concerns are delivered in a constructive manner. Speed of government does not always move as quick as speed in the private sector. It's not as easy as opening your front door at your home or repairing something, sometimes things take time. And I just hope that all this will be understood, that as there was such a large turnout, people really care about the issues of this election. And I want to thank you, both those that voted for Mayor Lundberg and those that voted for Mr. Wakefield, for turning out. 20% of our community, hopefully it's a good sample of what our community's looking for and I hope that everybody rallies behind the results. One of the reasons why I'm standing up here is I wanted to acknowledge a couple of the things that have changed. Social media, I wanted to take a moment, many people felt like they needed to be heard. Thank you, Mayor Lundberg, for being visible on social media. Thank you, Tim has also been visible on social media. Thank you, Chuck. I've seen you actively engaging people on social media. Although I don't expect people to have to respond to everything because there's way too much going on, I appreciate the visibility. Dan has always been very active. Barb, thank you for your engagement and I know Joe's been in there also. She's, her and Brett are kind of retiring per se, but I really appreciate those that are continuing forward with the council, at least showing their presence, because I think it means a lot to the community that you have acknowledged that they want to be heard in that venue, so I just feel like you deserve the recognition for that, thank you so much. The concerns that many residents have expressed regarding, you know, falling behind on certain things, planning and infrastructure, I want to, I'm confident, first of all, that this council will address and correct those issues and I hope that we come behind, come together behind that. By that, I don't mean that we be silent. When I say we come together, I think that anybody who has an opinion should express it in the proper manner and I 100% believe that this council and Mayor Lundberg will lead us in the right direction. And I thank everybody up here for what you're doing for this community. So, by saying I hope we come behind everybody, I'm not saying to people that have expressed their opinions in one matter or another to be silent. What I'm asking those folks to do is present that in a positive manner that helps move our community forward and I believe that everybody on this council, including Mayor Lundberg, would raise their hand first and say, "I absolutely will listen to everybody in this community because I know you will," so thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else that'd like to address the council? If not, I would ask that Trudy step to the mic and introduce our topic of the evening.
Hi, Trudy Papka, 1609 South Dolly Drive, and I'm here to introduce the artists who painted the lovely rain barrels you see in front of us tonight. I have no idea how many of them are here, but I want to name their names and have them step up here. But before then, I'd like to just explain what we did here. Back in October, November, we came to a decision of doing a giveaway of rain barrels and we needed someone to paint them, so the thought came to us to ask the school and Jennifer Turwe suggested that her art club would be interested. So, the art club at the intermediate school is responsible for the painting of these three barrels. They started the project after the holidays and we just wrapped them up last week, so they put a lot of work into them. Each one of them had to be painted twice. So, as I call your name, and like I say, I don't know how many are here, but I'm gonna call you up in alphabetical order and if you would stand in alphabetical order, even though it might be out of order for your barrel, that way we can get a good picture and we'll know who's, who is who. Kylie Katie? Olivia Karswal? Audrey Clyde Kosilfsky? We aren't showing a good number here yet. Here comes one? Okay. Are you Audrey? Okay, Audrey. Elizabeth Klein? Carolyn Meyer? And if you'd stand right up, step up there.
You can stand in front of us.
Be shy, don't be shy, all right? And in order, don't get out of order. Hannah Meyer? Miley Moots? Connor Murphy? This next name, bear with me, I think I've got it right. Jaden Ramazoni? Ramazoni? Ashlyn Shotkosky? Is Ashlyn here? Macy Sommervold? Last but not least, Sadie Webster?
No, they're supposed to stand in front of there.
So on behalf of the Brandon Water Conservation Committee, thank you very much for a job well done.
Can everybody look here? Thank you.
You're free to go.
Thanks, ladies.
Thank you very much. And while I'm still here, while I'm up here, I just wanted to get my request in for approval for some more candy, for tossing at the parade, because we've got possibly 12 additional people walking in the parade with us and so I don't believe we have enough candy, so. We've got the money in our budget, we just need your approval to buy it. Thank you. So moved, okay, great.
We'll take care of it. Brian said yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Trudy.
Very good. Thank you very much, ladies, you did an excellent job on the...
And those are giveaways, right?
Yeah, Trudy, did you mention the giveaway? Do you want to mention?
I'm sorry, I didn't quite explain this. I'm sorry, I didn't quite explain this. The post went out today for the rain barrel giveaway, and at 2:00 this afternoon, we already had 97 comments. I don't know what it's up to now, but at the parade, May 5th, these will be displayed in the parade, and then the following week, depending on how many entries we have on Facebook, they will be given away to the, to three people randomly. Sorry about that.
I'll have to talk to Mrs. Turwe on, aren't there any male artists in this district? No, you ladies did a tremendous job on that. Thank you very much. Moving on to item number seven of our agenda, second reading of ordinance number 578. An ordinance amending the Brandon zoning ordinance by amending section 1517-3, building permits and fees and the expiration of a building permit. In summary, Brian, that's just kind of the one...
It'll, it's two active building permits on a residentially zoned property, and there's no limit on commercial industrial, number of permits in the commercial industrial districts.
Okay.
And I would just add, this was discussion of planning and zoning, they were all in favor of this.
Very good.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second to approve the second reading of ordinance number 578. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number eight is the canvassing of votes, so we'll need to convene the election board right now, which basically consists of you guys as the council members. So, it's just a formality of convening the election board, and then I would need a motion to approve the results of the mayoral election and the canvassing of those said results.
I make a motion to approve, and then we've already signed off on the thing, on the form, so.
Motion is second. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving the canvass of the votes, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. There's some summer staff on the golf course committee, our golf course that we need to hire, some additional summer staff?
Yep, one person, the marshal Doug Nickerson at 9:10 an hour.
Need a motion for that?
Correct.
To approve.
Motion is second to approve Doug Nickerson as an additional summer worker at the golf course. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have a police report in our agenda, our packet tonight for your review, and then we also have a, go ahead, Chief.
Real quick on, update on the hiring process. We have closed the applications on Friday. We ended up, I believe, with 41. We'll be testing on the 18th and 20th and then moving forward with the process. It's just a quick update. I also have a resignation that I need to report. Officer Quentin Struble will be resigning from the police department effective on the 12th, Friday.
Very good. Thank you. We'll put that on the next agenda, I assume. Next agenda item is 10B is a proclamation 4-2019. It's Building Safety Month. Is Mr. Clark here today, tonight? Doing my voice being only about half, I'm going to pick a few of the sections of the proclamation. It's rather lengthy, so I'm just going to pick a couple of sections of the proclamation to get everybody the gist of it. Proclamation 4-2019, "Whereas each year in observance of Building Safety Month, Americans are asked to consider the commitment to improve building safety and economic investment at home and in the community, and to acknowledge the essential service provided to all of us by state and local and state building departments, fire prevention bureaus, and federal agencies in protecting lives and property. Therefore, I, Paul Lundberg, Mayor of the City of Brandon, South Dakota, do here proclaim the month of May 2019 is Building Safety Month. Accordingly, I encourage all of our citizens to join with their communities in participation of Building Safety Month activities." A lot more lengthy than that, but my voice was not going to hold out the rest of the day, so we'll get that. Anything you want to add, Brian? Okay, thank you. Along with that, Mr. Clark presented our packet of building inspection report for our review. Any questions on that or comment? Park and Rec Committee have a work report and additional staff for this summer.
Correct. Kaylee Moore. Hire? Kaylee Moore at 1116 now, or in the parks maintenance.
Can I have a motion for Kaylee Moore? Motion is second to hire Kaylee Moore for additional staff in the Park and Rec Department. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We also have some bids on the tennis court, I'll call them the Aspen Park Tennis Court resurfacing project to redo the surface and reline them for tennis and pickleball. Low bid was from Janko for $12,400, I believe.
Correct.
Second.
Motion is second to approve the low bid from Janko to resurface the Aspen Park Tennis Courts. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, item 12A is our backyard chicken discussion. I think we have it on the agenda for a discussion item for the council, and we've had a lot of inquiries, as we saw earlier from the community, to take this forward, and it's on the agenda for the council to decide to move it forward, so I'd open it up to council members.
I would just add that this came before planning and zoning. They were agreeable to the, I guess I'd call it the concept, Brian, of so many feet from the property line. So, planning and zoning is certainly in favor of this.
I would just add too, I had the opportunity to go to planning and zoning and hear a little bit more from Shawna Goldhammer and Kevin Smith as well, a couple of residents that came to that as well. I didn't know how I felt about this a couple of weeks ago when I was asked about it, but I've done a lot of research and I've met with those people, as well as Stephanie Peterson and Wyatt Erlacher and Shannon Olson, and all the pros definitely to me outweigh the cons, and this urban agriculture is definitely a thing that is becoming very popular. People do want to know where their food is coming from. I am really impressed with all of the steps that the Sioux Falls folks did through their process several years ago, and I guess I would propose that we move forward mimicking what their hard work has done as their efforts have proven to be favorable for Sioux Falls.
Ironically, oh, sorry. Go ahead. Ironically, when I first got on council back in 2011, this was before us then, and ironically, on my last full meeting, it's before us again. So, I don't know if it's me and chickens, I don't know what the deal is, but I, you know, I'm, I'm still on the fence about it, but I like the idea, Shawna, I think that's your name, you know how you guys did your investigation, how you weighed out the pros and the cons, and opening up my eyes a little bit more. I guess I'm open to it.
I definitely am in favor. I think each of you that presented during your five minutes has a vast amount of knowledge. I will thank Wyatt for sending me an email. It has opened up my eyes to some of the benefits, such as more natural food sources, yolks are more golden, nutritionally beneficial with higher vitamin E, omega-3s, beta-carotene, much lower in cholesterol, pest control. I think we all would agree that if we had less bugs, that would be cool. No better fertilizer than homegrown based off of fruit, vegetables, and flower beds, and certainly there's less wasted food. So, to me, it makes sense that we move forward as a council to put this in place and try to adopt this.
So, my stance is pretty easy on this one. My seven-year-old is extremely excited about this. He has his own Pinterest that's called Caleb's Chickens. So, based on that, and a lot of very positive feedback, having talked to several residents about this topic, and obviously having Sioux Falls, having done so much research in the past, I would say the same as what Dana did. I would mimic moving forward with a similar to Sioux Falls.
I think the only question I have is what you want, because you're talking about chickens, and I provided to Dana in your packet is what Sioux Falls has, which is way more than chickens. It's ducks and geese and turkeys, and so whatever you want to do, just provide the direction so I can draft it according to how we have our stuff.
I like the core component, maybe we could ask for some clarity to Shawna or Kevin to what their ordinance is, but my understanding is it's six hens, no roosters, roosters would be prohibited. Sioux Falls has a 25-foot setback from a neighbor's property. Could we maybe ask for Shawna to come up and just give us some of the highlights? I believe you have to have a permit if you're going to go over the six or look at any other type of poultry.
So, we had, oops. Thanks. In Sioux Falls, as part of our community-wide discussion, there was separate rules for keeping of other fowl, including geese and ducks. Those do require a license or a permitting process where your neighbors have to petition your support, and then that is licensed by animal control. They already licensed animals, so it was a good fit. It was, zoning came into the conversation when we talked about coops and how far away from a neighboring property's home or bedroom window those coops should be. So, that's, we kind of handled it differently. For chickens, we do allow up to six chickens with no permit. If you want more than that, you have to go through the same process as if you want to keep ducks or geese. So, we did kind of draft different definitions to define what a chicken is, different from a other fowl, including, you know, the ordinance actually has a scientific name of the bird. I don't know that, that much about that kind of stuff, but that's what we came up with, and it's working in Sioux Falls, so.
And then, correct me if I'm wrong, the other parts of it that may work into this would be dealt through your other ordinances with nuisances, if there were ever an issue with an animal at large or with odor or anything like that, that was not per se inside of your animal section, right?
Right. So, we also updated not, zoning came later. We did update some nuisance ordinances to include the amount of time that feed can be on the ground, and there was already in our nuisance ordinances regarding manure and how frequently you have to remove manure. It's just like any other animal. Your dog, you have to remove that manure a certain timeframe, and chickens were no different. So, we did prohibit roosters, and also, I'm just kind of glancing at, it was a while ago that we did this ordinance. We also came up with different definition from livestock, because at the time, there was some people who thought it would be a good idea to bring home nanny goats so they could have their own milk. That was a little bit over the top, and so my phrase was chickens, no goats, in Sioux Falls, anyway.
Lisa, I had some conversations with Brian earlier, and I think he wanted to make the ordinance all-inclusive, although we appreciate all the work that Sioux Falls did on this ordinance. We are not Sioux Falls in that we don't want to be going back and forth between this huge book of ordinance, so we'd like to incorporate that all in the same ordinance that they have in different spots. So, if we get that done, and Brian had a couple of other suggestions that I thought were very valid, so if you could bring that forward for us, just in conversation with Brian, I think that would be a great starting point.
Yeah, but we're just talking about chickens is what the council is wanting us to look at, because we don't have to redefine goats and all the geese and all of that, so I'm just going to work with Brian on something about chickens unless I get a different direction.
Sounds good to me.
Let's not give Caleb more Pinterest boards, Lisa, we'll stick with chickens, please.
We also didn't allow slaughter either. I mean, butcher and slaughter is different, yeah. You don't want that.
One other thing that I found interesting was that people actually take pride in their coop. So, if there is this tour de coupe, I'm going to get behind Mr. Wakefield because his engineering background's probably going to have some pretty cool coop.
Thank you.
Very good. Administration, good. How to proceed? And that'll come back as an ordinance, Brian, is that how?
It'll come back, hopefully at the next meeting, as a draft.
Draft ordinance?
For your review.
Okay, very good.
Just one more quick reference. Aberdeen has an ordinance, and theirs is much more all-inclusive. That might be a good reference point for us.
Good. Thank you. Okay, 12B is a resolution 1119, a resolution adopting the city of Brandon administrative policy. Looks like we took administrative policy 1, 2, and 3 and combined them into one.
For resolution, correct.
For resolution 1119?
Correct.
Is there discussion or motion on part of the council?
The question I would have is just, I'm not quite sure why we need this.
I couldn't hear your question.
I'm not quite sure why we need this.
These, if memory serves me correctly, these are administrative policies that we put together to delineate the timing of council packets, council agendas, and email communications between city council people and administration and staff. Any comments?
I don't see the need for it myself either. I think things were working pretty well, but...
I'd entertain a motion if anybody wanted one, or it doesn't appear like there's a lot of desire to push forward with 1119. So, I'll put it out there for a motion, and if not, we'll move forward. Not hearing one, we'll move forward with resolution 1219, which is adopting administrative policy number four, notice of employee issues, 49 of your packet. Comments on that resolution? Or a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second to approve resolution 12-19, adopting administrative policy number four, notice of employee issues. Any discussion?
I would like to rename it number one if we're not adopting 1, 2, and 3, since we don't have a one, for clarity purposes.
Right, right. Further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Christina, call the roll, just so we can get this on record.
Bastian?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
Fish?
No.
Housman?
Aye.
Parsons?
Aye.
Wakefield?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-1. Thank you. Resolution 1319 is a resolution adding 8.9, section 8.9, employees' emails to elected officials, and section 8.10, employee meeting with the mayor or council to the City of Brandon employment policy manual. Questions, comments, or motions? Hearing none, we will move forward and with no action on resolution 1319. Item number C is authorization. Authorize a request for proposals for a social media consultant, or request for qualifications. Brian?
We've discussed, and we've got, or we've included in this year's budget, some funding for a social media consultant, asking for some input from the council before we develop the RFP, as to what you're looking for, what we should be addressing in the, in the RFP. Timing-wise, we hopefully have a draft for the next council meeting for review and approval, and then out for, out for proposals.
So, do you want us to send you some comments?
Yeah, if you could send me some comments that I could incorporate in the, in the RFP.
Sounds reasonable.
This is going to be a fairly short, one-page or less proposal.
Just to reiterate, it'll be on a consulting basis only?
Consulting only.
And also not an employee?
Not an employee, consulting only. Tonight, it's just, you think it's a good idea? If not, let me know, so I don't draft something. Otherwise, I go forward.
Definitely.
Okay. Pass on your thoughts to Mr. Reed then, so he can get something drawn up for the next council meeting. Be appreciated. Item number E is, or D, Dog, is MedStar ambulance newspaper article. Des Meyer had put together an article on Mr. Major's proposal to think out of the box with an ambulance services solution. And I think our council probably wanted to just hear from you in a short summary of what you were thinking with that. I don't think there was any action. We just wanted to hear it from you, what the whole proposal was. So if you could present real quickly.
There you go.
Okay. First off, I want to thank you on the chicken deal, because I got to get six chickens now myself, so let us know when you get that deal done. I am trying to think outside the box, guys. And what that was, it wasn't a proposal, it's an idea. And the way to put these ideas out there is to make discussion, public discussion on these things. As you know, countrywide, countrywide, paramedical-level ambulance especially, but ambulances as a whole are struggling. And they're struggling financially, because reimbursements, although are staying the same, in some cases going down, the cost of healthcare is obviously going up. And the cost of employees, and the cost of insurance, and the cost of everything is skyrocketing in our line of work. So as I do appreciate, and more than you know, the help that we get from the city, and by the way, most of the Valley Springs is on board, along with Brandon Township and Split Rock Township, and all these townships in the area are on board, helping sustain services as we presently know them, I'm trying to think outside the box. And here's what I'm thinking. Now, as you all read that article, believe it or not, I haven't read it yet, but I know what I said when I was speaking with Jill on this issue. Some places have ambulance authority, they have ambulance boards, they have ambulance tax, as fire departments have an ambulance tax. And as you all may or may not know, you do not have to have an ambulance service in your city, in your town, in your county. It's not, it's not like a fire. We don't call it an essential service, as of right now. It's not an essential service. So you wouldn't be in trouble if you said, "We don't want one," because it's not essential. We all know it is essential, anybody who's needed an ambulance. So I want to get into some of the ideas I'm thinking about. You know, we look at people, and believe it or not, most people that don't have insurance have a hard time paying their bill. And so the bill is paid, obviously, by the company that provides service to them. When you have a tax, when you have something that people, like an ambulance tax, an ambulance authority, well, that money just goes directly to the ambulance service, but people, the only thing they gain from that is making sure they got a solvent ambulance service. That's what they gain from that. They're still responsible for their bills, they're responsible for the copay, still responsible for all of this. Well, thinking outside the box, and I'm not saying this will work, I don't even know if it's legal. Thinking outside the box, though, if everybody is responsible to pay into an ambulance service, then why wouldn't they benefit other than just having an ambulance service? And that's why I called it some type of an ambulance insurance, which means for $50 or $75 a year per household, and this is just me thinking outside the box again, when you call for an ambulance and you don't have insurance, or you can't pay your deductible, it's already covered by that $50 or $75 a year that your household paid into this project. And that was kind of my thought. We, I don't know if it's, if it would be called a basic utility model, or what it would be, but I'm a true believer that when you pay for something, you have to get something in return. Well, of course, if you pay for an ambulance service on an ambulance tax, you're having a solvent ambulance service in return. I went a step further and said, "Not only will you have an ambulance service," which we have seven critical care ambulances in the city, not only do you have that, but you also have insurance with that $50 or $75 a year that you're paying, which means you don't have insurance, you don't pay a bill. If you have a copay, you don't pay that. The only thing that the ambulance service at that point would collect is just on your insurance, if you have insurance. We would bill the insurance, nothing else goes out to the public. And that was what I was trying to, again, I haven't read that, but that's what I was trying to portray out there to start a discussion. Is there a better way to do it, other than just having the cities help fund ambulance services? Is there a better way to do it to where people actually, other than just paying into a taxpayers' base here, is there a better way that people get something for that money? And if something like that would take effect, it's not double-dipping. That's not what I was thinking. I was thinking, no more do we have to have help from the City of Brandon, because everybody is paying their fair share to make this happen. Again, some people probably don't want to do it, because they can afford their own service, and they're not going to use it until they do. I understand that. But that, what I mean by that is, nobody thinks about ambulance service or fire department, or your line of work, until they need it. That's when we think about it. But the rest of us have to be prepared for that when you need it. And so that's my point. I'm not throwing it out there saying this is what we have to do. It was a discussion piece to see if we throw something out there, what would come back? And is there a better idea? Is there other ideas out there? You know, our goal is to be here forever. Our goal is to provide services here forever. And I'm just looking at ways to help sustain that. That was my reason for the article. Go ahead.
So, question, Jay, if I understood you correctly, you said that other states or communities have a ambulance tax?
There is areas. In fact, it was voted down here, I believe, in 2007 or 2008, in Del Rapids and Humboldt. There was a vote, and I'm trying to think of, maybe you can help me out with this, but there was a vote for an ambulance district, which everybody would be taxed in an ambulance district, and it was voted down by the people. But there is places that have ambulance districts, like they have a fire district, where they, everybody pays so much levy on their house, but it's not, it goes directly for service.
Are those places in South Dakota or other states?
I don't know about any place in South Dakota. In other states, they do have ambulance districts, and they may have some in South Dakota, too. I haven't researched it that much.
So if there, in other states, you don't know how the legalities went, that those are now legal?
No, 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 no. My idea is what I said. I don't know if that was legal. My idea of making it some type of a utility where it's on your water bill, and everybody has insurance that lives in Brandon, I don't know if that's possible.
Because that was my other question. We don't know if it's legal.
Right.
Yeah. That's a big question for me.
That's the big one.
And I just, hindsight, I would have appreciated coming to the council first, so we could have had a discussion, rather than playing it out in the paper, but it's over and done with, so.
I agree. Certainly, your passion and dedication to the community is outstanding. I've had some people from the community reach out to me, and I'm just going to read the first statement. "In Brandon alone, Major estimates the ambulance insurance fee would generate between $200,000 and $300,000 annually, more than enough to eliminate the yearly standby fee the ambulance service has recently requested from Manyaha County and the three cities and six townships. It provides 911 services." And so a couple things come up. Number one, I think initially, when you approached the board, you wanted $135,000. Now, when I read this, it seems like now it's up to $200,000 to $300,000. That's one.
Okay.
The second part of that is, is it brings me back to another issue. As we move forward to the summer, what is our, what is our budget? What funding requests are you asking for this evening from the city for the future? And then a second part of that is, is if you're, if you're getting money from other cities, townships...
I hate to interrupt you, but can I answer those one at a time? Sure. So can we go back to the first one?
Yeah.
What was that question?
So in regards to your, you approached the council and asked for, you said that you'd be happy with $135,000, I believe, understanding that you'd lost more than that.
Right.
And we agreed to less than, a little less than $50,000. You approached Manyaha County. They had declined at that point. You've reached out to other communities. But when I read this statement, and I've had people reach out to me, it concerns me that now our budget is going to be $200,000 to $300,000 annually. So if, that's the way I read it. So can you address that part first?
Yes. Your budget's not changing. Again, this wasn't, with my idea, excuse me, with my idea, it had nothing to do with taxpayers' funds, by the way. So your budget's not increasing. And you, as we well know, my family does subsidize even after the monies we get from everybody. My idea went a step further, because there's a lot of folks who can't afford their ambulance bill when they get it. And I know that the 50 does help, or the $49,999 does help, and the other monies we get from the others does help. Don't get me wrong, I'm very thankful for that. It does help. But my idea was to go a step further and say, "Well, to collect a little bit more money, nobody gets a bill," other than their insurance." And that was my idea. It wasn't like I'm saying, "Now I'm asking the city for $300,000." And I respectfully disagree with your statement, that this was a business decision. This wasn't a decision I was asking the city for any help on. This was a business decision I put out there to try and get the community. In fact, I've heard nothing from the community myself, and I thought that I would have. And I've heard nothing positive or negative. But this was how I'm trying to keep this business going. And that was just one of the things that I talked about to help that go. But to answer your question, no, it's not affecting the budgets that we have presently agreed to for next year or the year after.
So you don't plan on making any changes to the request for the city for...
Absolutely not. No, not unless something like this would come up, and chance of, the 5%, but there is a chance somebody came up with a good idea.
Now, some other people have reached out to me and are concerned that because you provide 911 services in other, you know, townships or cities, how are we going to be guaranteed that our 911 services will not be affected?
I guess I'm not understanding that question, because...
If you're out, if you're out in the county, providing 911 services, and we have an emergency here in Brandon, can you explain to the people that are concerned that if you're in other areas servicing 911 emergencies, how will you be available? What is your availability to our city, now that we've given you that money? Can you just explain that to the people that are concerned about that, about you not being available or being available?
Absolutely. And in fact, since we've received the help from the city and the townships and so forth, we've not called for mutual aid once. And before that, we have called for mutual aid. But to answer your question, you put it right in the ordinance. 10% of the time, if we're busy, whether it be three calls in Brandon, one on the county, or vice versa, if we're busy, mutual aid is the way to go. We mutualized Garrettson three times last week, because they had no ambulance. Now, if we wouldn't mutual aid them and have our system leave here to go there, well, of course, we'd bring somebody else to staff here. But if we wouldn't do that, that person in Garrettson who we're mutualizing would be without ambulance. And so we count on Garrettson, and we count on Sioux Falls, and we count on these people to help mutualize us, when we're at a high rate of transports, and they count on that from us also. So, but that was already covered in the original ordinance, is we could mutualize up to 10%.
Okay. And then one last...
But we haven't done it since we, sure, we haven't done it all year, I won't believe, so far.
And then one last thing, just getting back to the budget. I think it was also quoted in the Brandon Valley Journal. After opening his books to the, for the city to see, Major had said that there could be consequences. When you ask for those answers, there might be consequences for those answers, which is more money. That was on 122, 2019. Again, people have reached out to me concerning the kind of statement in the beginning of what I just said, in the latest, about this idea, which I think, you know, relatively speaking, it makes sense to have further discussions, as long as there's some legality to it. But at the same aspect, what did you mean by that?
About opening my books?
No, about consequences for those answers.
I guess I'm not understanding the question.
Okay, so as quoted in the Brandon Valley Journal, "After opening his books for the city to review, Major said that there could be consequences. When you ask for those answers, there may be consequences for those answers, which is more money." That was a quote from you from 122, 2019.
I think I had...
So my question is, in regard to the budget and some of those concerns that you see when you read that, without knowing the details of what your passion is, or what you're trying to get at with this idea.
Jill here?
That would...
Okay.
And again, that's fake, that's not the full, you know, that's just a snippet.
And I can answer that question, because I believe I know where that's coming from.
Okay.
Had nothing to do with Brandon, that answer. What they had to do with is, the county wanted to dig in, and still wants to dig into, "All of my private business." And they won't accept what you accepted here. They won't accept the fact that 911 costs this much, we made this much, this is our 911 books. They want to see our private books, they want to see my transit, my wheelchair books, they want to see all of my books. And, you know, they quote-unquote say it'll stay confidential. Well, you show your books to 10 or 12 people, you tell me the confidentiality of that. And number two, is that has nothing to do with 911 service. That has to do with my family having these businesses, supporting this business. And that's where that comes from. In fact, I'll go one step further and tell you what I told the county today. I said, "I will open up my books, every single thing I own. I will give them my kids' bank account, I'll give them my personal checking account, and after they look at everything, they have to promise me they're going to make up my full difference. Not just the 50, but they have to make up the full difference of what my family is putting forward, even after we get the subsidy." If they're willing to do that, if they're willing to take a chance, that I'm asking for something I shouldn't be asking for, then take a chance that you're going to get your checkbook out and write me a $250,000 check rather than a 51. And that's the point I made to the county, is that, you know, you have a right to ask questions for taxpayers, you do. I got a right to protect my personal assets, my personal businesses. And that's where that statement came from.
Okay. Thank you.
I'll just comment that at the last meeting, I wasn't asked to look at anything. I do know that Sturgis looked at something like this in 2018, that Wall looked at something like this in 2012, creating an ambulance district and taxing. That's all I know, just from what Google talks about. So I know nothing more than that, if it's legal or not. I just know that they... So, okay. Brian says you can create an ambulance district and impose a tax. I just haven't looked at it.
I just have a couple quick follow-up questions. How many calls do you have in Brandon a year, again, like in 2018?
Oh, 400.
400-ish?
Four or 500-ish.
So like ballpark, how many of those would you say don't have insurance where you're able to bill?
I don't have those numbers in front of me, and I'm sorry. Yep. On that same note, you did ask me to separate my books, so that you could actually see what's going on. And I've hired a full-time accountant, who's doing all of my bookwork now, that has things that you'll enjoy seeing, or maybe not enjoy seeing next year. But you will, my books will be completely separated, as we talked about, and you'll be able to see everything that goes on with the funding that you're helping us with, versus the need that we have.
I think we, as a city, are continuing to look at the issue, just as you are, and we will continue that, the whole process. We'd like to try to get Manyaha County in there and get it all encompassing, as, just as you would, too, I assume. So I think progressing forward, that's what we'll continue to do. Obviously, Manyaha County knows more about ambulance service than we do. These six people up here, or seven people up here, we don't know a lot about ambulance service. And it was evidenced last time when we contributed to this ambulance service, that we are adamant that we want to continue an ambulance, 911 service here, and we're felt it a valuable resource to us. But we want to continue to look at it and try to get some encompassing solution to the whole problem for everybody around, around the Sioux Falls area. And that's probably a big task, I don't know. I'm definitely not an ambulance expert, but we're going to continue trying, I think, as you are, too, I'm sure.
So Brett, real quick, that comment from 122 about more expense, I did talk to Jay back then, and one of the things that that was in reference to is, is it would be more expense to keep the books separate.
Okay.
So it was, if we wanted the visibility, there would be more expense there. I don't know that it was ever discussed that it would be passed on to the city or anything like that, I guess. But that was one of the comments that Jay had made to me back then.
Okay. Thank you.
And then maybe also, sure.
I think it has clarified for us and the public that this was just an idea out there.
Brainstorming.
Brainstorming, and was pumped, you know, when something gets published, it all of a sudden becomes gospel. And I think we're at ease a little bit more, knowing that it's not. It was just some ideas out there that you were throwing out, and it got published in the newspaper, and that's fine. And I think we will move forward now, and we appreciate you coming in and clarifying all that stuff for us. And let's both move forward and continue our due diligence and trying to come up with some solutions. It's not easy.
You know, sitting here, and I want to say commissioner, but that's not right. I do appreciate the fact that you brought that up, because you're, you know, the fact that you were a little disappointed that I didn't come to the board about that. And I can understand that, because you are helping... And, and I can understand that, because you are helping fund our service now. And so, if I come up with some other ideas, I think maybe beneficial, or, or work or so forth, so forth, you know, this is probably the place where I can come up and, and talk about that. So, I'm not putting light on what you said, as, I gotta look at the businessman part of it, and then the part of it that's the city part, and, and so I'll do that. The other thing I just wanted to mention, beans I'm up here now, all of the, what we're trying to do now is, every event in the city of, in the city of Brandon, at the high schools and, and whatever, when there's events being held, we're going to try and have our ambulance at night, be there, just to enjoy a basketball game, enjoy a football game, soccer, the wrestling thing, if those guys are still here, we can be there for that thing. And so, we're, we're doing our best to become more of a part of the city. And so, it's, it's one of those things, we're here anyway, we just will be there. And, welcome Chief, and goodbye Chief.
Just a couple of things, you're, you're right about that. It's very, very important for that visibility, but also to let the community know that, that, you know, 911 services are available, and, and that, that's that giving back, that customer service is going to go a long way. Just to reiterate what Chuck was saying, it catches us off-guard, as a council, when people reach out to us and read something in the paper without us knowing, so it's not, it's, it's, I think the appropriate thing to do is, instead of getting the cart in front of the horses, you know, approach administration or the mayor, council, and then we can have that discussion, you're right. Because what happens is, we get a lot of questions, and then we don't know how to answer it, because quite frankly, you know, it's, if it's called a tax, or whatever, insurance, it doesn't really matter, it looks like, oh, now our taxes are going to go up again. And so, it just kind of catches us off-guard. So just in the future, it's wonderful to have good ideas, and to have those discussions, they may or may not come through, but I think, just to reiterate, it's more of just keeping us, so that we're in the loop of what's happening, so.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Thanks, Jay.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
I have two model suggestions, no personal comment?
Go ahead.
Yeah, one suggestion is, I'm sure Brian's very close with Brookings, they own their municipal ambulance, but they do charge a revenue tax, I believe it's on, like, their phone bill. And then, another model that could be referenced, I didn't know this was coming up tonight, but the Chandler, Arizona, for fired, fire service, charges this tax, and it, but they give the option to the resident, if they don't opt into the tax, and they ever have a fire, they get the bill for the entire service. But if they opt into this tax, which is, I can't remember the amount, I used to live down there, then they pay nothing for the service. So, just a couple of models.
I'm sure there are several models out there, but State of South Dakota is a different cat, too, on a lot of things, so. South Dakota and Chandler, Arizona have a different opinion on taxes. Just, exactly. Very good. Moving forward, we have an ambulance ordinance draft.
Just a, just a draft right at the moment, kind of based off the counties, there's some tweaks, more than just some tweaks and money cages that we need to make. Lisa drafted some stuff that she would like to see, Brett sent me a, I really liked the email this morning, with some other items. So, the plan is that Chuck and Brett and I will get together and modify that for the next presentation at the council.
Very good. Thank you, gentlemen. Any comments from you two, or?
Just an old Brett.
Business as usual?
First and foremost, it's a team, so there's not one person, just, Brian's done a lot of work as well, and so, it's just nice to work as a team.
Always takes a team. Very good, thank you, guys. Street report, we have the work report, and then we also need to have the bid to purchase a transit bus?
Correct, the state is purchasing new buses, total cost $67,441, our share of that would be $13,488. There's a diagram of the, of the bus on page 67, it's your typical 12-passenger handicap-accessible van, very similar to the ones that we've, we've got on the road now. Delivery would be sometime after August.
Very good, can I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second, to approve the purchase of a transit-style bus, as proposed in the board packet tonight, any further discussion?
Our, our bus is worn out, is that why we're getting a new one, or what was the driving force of this?
We replaced one a year ago, and then the second one is getting up there in age, and then the other thing that we can do, we've got an old brown van, 12-passenger van that's not handicap-accessible, that was our first bus, that we could, we could get rid of. Although, it is fun to drive.
Yes. Fun to have.
Any other questions? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item is the CCOG Transit Bus Consulting Agreement, that we've talked about in a couple past meetings.
Yep, this is the coordinated plan that's required by the state. If you remember, CCOG was the low bidder to, to form the workforce, and this is their official agreement to do that.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion in a second, to approve the agreement with CCOG, on the Transit Bus Consulting Agreement, any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Lastly, under the street report, we have a detour agreement with Minnehaha County when construction begins on Holly Boulevard, we need to have an agreement with...
Yep, this is an agreement with Minnehaha County for the Holly project, where we closed the road for 30 days. Since we are detouring those vehicles onto a county road, it just, it's just a standard agreement with them.
Right. And you're shipping that traffic to Madison?
Right.
Okay.
So we'll have two other agreements with the state, for Highway 11 and Veterans Highway as well, hopefully on the next agenda.
Is there any expense to this, or anything like that, we need to be aware of?
Only if there's additional wear and tear. So, I'll take my GoPro and video it all before construction starts, before we close it, and we'll go from there.
Can I have a motion?
Go move.
Motion in a second, to approve the detour agreement with Minnehaha County, with respect to the construction this summer on Sioux Boulevard, alls in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. There's a proposal for a 16-inch water main in Twin Rivers Crossing, it was handed out tonight, I believe, Brian? If you wanted to quickly go through that, or Tammy, I'm sorry.
This is Justin Oakland's addition, and when they started doing the design work, the city asked them to upsize their 8-inch line to a 16-inch line, and the reason for this was just to be proactive, and take this 16-inch line to the water treatment plant someday. So, it's just to help us with our water distribution system. So, the cost for that is $41,224, and this is just for the first phase. So this doesn't take it all the way to the water treatment plant. I'm, I'm still playing catch-up a little bit on how this is routed to the water treatment plant, but I'm assuming that this is about a quarter of the expense.
Go ahead.
And this'll, so that we don't have to do a rip up his yard, or his road, and put in an upgrade, this is a needed loop, and that kind of thing's correct?
Right. Yep, we want to do it all at one time.
So we just will get it done while he's got his road open?
Right.
I'm going to make a motion.
Second.
Motion in a second, to approve Twin Rivers Crossing, Phase 1, 16-inch water main proposal, as presented, in the amount of $41,224. Any further discussion?
Nope.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Very good, to let Justin know. Do we have any need to go into executive session?
Can I say something?
Yes, I'm sorry, Brett, yeah.
Anyway, this is my last meeting, as Ward 1 council member, and so, I just wanted to say some thank-yous. Also, leave, leave some words of encouragement, as the community moves forward, like TJ said, working together for common cause, of making tomorrow a better place today. So first of all, I want to thank the Brandon City employees, department heads, for using your talents to help make tomorrow a better place than today. I know that it hasn't been easy over the last year or two, with some of the things that have been said on social media, but I want to let you know that I'm grateful for your hard work, and I know the community, the city administration, the council, and the mayor are blessed to have you as part of our team. I also want to give a shout-out and thanks to the crew from the Public Works Department, for giving me the time to ask some questions, and to let you vent your raw answers and concerns open to my eyes, to the importance of effective communication, and listening, and I am grateful for the remarkable job that each of you do, to keep the city moving in the right direction. Next, I want to thank Brian, Christina, Lisa, and Tammy for being patient with me, and for taking the time to answer my questions. As you all may understand, it's probably, it's a very steep learning curve to sit here, and your dedication, knowledge, passion, insight, and expertise, I believe, is an important part of the equation of the success of this community. I also want to thank my good friend, Linda Weber, or yeah, Linda, for encouraging me to run for the open Ward 1 position vacated by Mr. Jones. We have not always seen eye-to-eye, or agreed on topics discussed, but we are, but our genuine friendship and respect for one another has always been at the forefront, and I'm truly humbled and honored to be called your friend. Please continue to follow your passion with the Food Pantry, and I encourage each of those people that are in attendance and listening tonight, to get involved in the Food Pantry, some amazing things are going on, for those that are falling in hard times. I also want to thank Mayor Lundberg, and my council colleagues, in particular, Joe, Chuck, Barb, and Dana, for giving me the opportunity to represent Ward 1, and for helping me live out my lifelong dream to serve my community. It has truly been an honor to walk and work alongside each of you, and as you probably have recognized during this process, it's never been about a job, or a title. But pure passion, humbly working, and giving back to my community, and I'm thankful, thankful for the opportunity that you've given me. So tonight is a great day with new beginnings, and it's perfect time to check our eagles at the door, and work together, because the most important aspects of this great city are our employees, and the people that call Brandon home. This journey towards a brighter future should not be about wins, losses, or keeping score, it should be about our community, our people, our unique set of goals and values, and our diversity. As I believe it's time to lead with integrity, be a role model for civility and professionalism, and hold ourselves accountable to a higher level of honesty, putting a greater emphasis on solutions, education, communication, accountability, transparency, and listening, rather than pointing fingers, being stuck in the past. We are not perfect, and quite honestly, we never will be. Each of us bears the scars of our past, and it can teach us important lessons about where we have been, and where we are going. Be proud of your past failures, Brandon, because it's the lessons learned within those failures, that will lead to future success. It's been an honor to work with a dedicated group of leaders, city administration, and city employees of this great city, graciously giving back your time and talents, humbly working towards a common goal, of making our community the best it can be. Remember, all of us has a vested interest in this community we call home, whether we work, have a home, or have a business here. It's a wonderful place to raise a family, and even with the challenges we face, it's still the place that I choose to raise my children and to call home. It's time that we begin to work together for a brighter future, focusing on mission, service, goals, communication, listening, honesty, respect, and core values for a brighter future, because we are truly Brandon Strong. And just in case you're wondering, yes, I drink the water, and so does my family. Thank you.
Thank you. (applause)
Very well said, Brett, thank you. Our working relationship on that council, I think, has morphed into more than that, and I think I can call you friend now, and that's, that's very valuable to me. Thank you, appreciate it. And don't leave until you get that ambulance ordinance stuff.
(laughing)
Thank you so much, you've been a great value to the city and this council. Item proceeding on, then, we have item 15B, Code of Conduct, 11314, Power of Council to Judge Members.
This is just an ordinance, council members asked me to revise the ordinance that we have, so that if the council would so choose for a code of conduct violation, they could impose a monetary penalty, so I drafted, as requested. We don't have a first reading, we don't have a second reading, it's just what I drafted, so I wanted to circulate it for council discussion, in case you want me to continue on and have a first and second reading then.
Questions, comments?
I would say that I do like the section in here where it says as well, impose a fine on a council member up to, that leaves some discretion for us, so I'd welcome any other comments as to a starting point, or where we go, but I like the, I would encourage all of us to leave it up to, and not certain dollar amounts.
Any other questions, comments?
Is it, is it progressive? Or just one?
You, you could have it progressive, I just drafted it so that the council could decide what amount, so if you had up to, let's say, $1,000, if the council decided it's a $50 fine for something, they could do, on a second one, they might increase it on their own, or they may say it's only 50, or they may initially go up, you know, right away to $1,000. I just put some cap in it, because I think you have to have some notice of what the cap might be, per violation. But it's not, the way I drafted, it's not progressive to require a first, a second amount, so.
Very good. We need to bring that back, then, for...
Well, I guess I kind of, I mean, I'll put some dollar amount in it, you can always change it on a first reading, but if we're going to do a first reading, does anybody have any feeling about what that amount should be?
I would say up to $500. Do we need to vote on that?
No.
And we can vote at that time, I just wanted some guidance, thank you.
Okay. Now, do I need to do the next thing? Oh, we have to go on to the next?
Counsel, all right, starting with that, 500, give it some thought, and we'll bring it back to the next council meeting, and then their next item on the agenda is Code of Conduct, Council Member Wakefield.
All right, I am the spokesman, spokeswoman for this group. All right, for, so we're going to have two different motions. The first motion we have to take care of first, I move for the Brandon City Council to disclose the March 7, 2019 letter to Tim Wakefield, information about the nature of the April 1, 2019 proceeding, and the evidence presented during the April 1, 2019 executive session.
For a second.
Give me a second.
Second. Motion in a second, to approve...
The disclosing of the letter.
Disclosure, just, as read by Joe Housman, I can't repeat that obvious, I'm not that good at remembering this stuff. Any discussion?
Hold on a second.
You know, I guess I didn't think about that, it's a motion to disclose executive session, so I think you can vote on that. I don't know why you have to recuse yourself to disclose executive... You know, I take that back, I think because it relates to you, you should probably recuse yourself on that motion.
Okay, I'll ask Christina to call the rule on the motion.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Fish.
Aye.
Housman.
Aye.
Parsons.
Aye.
Wakefield.
Okay, you said you had another motion?
Okay, now, the second motion is quite lengthy, but I'll go ahead and read it in its entirety. I move that Tim Wakefield be hereby publicly sanctioned and formally reprimanded, related to his communications as to Mr. Weir, and as to the alleged fraud pertaining to the South Dakota retirement system, and the council, through its president, execute a written decision that states, City of Brandon Council's public sanction and formal reprimand, Tim Wakefield. Brandon Ordinance 1-3-12 provides the stability and proper operation of the city's government depends on the public confidence in the integrity of the government, and upon responsible exercise of the trust conferred by the people. Expected of city council members is a responsible exercise of the public's trust and compliance with the city's code of conduct. The city council has considered conduct of Tim Wakefield related to two issues, and finds violations of the code of conduct have occurred specifically. Number one, in the month of February 2019, Mr. Wakefield stated that the city committed a fraud, related to the city's enrollment of Kim Surick into the South Dakota retirement system, a practice that had been approved by prior city councils for over 10 years. for over ten years. Mr. Wakefield also communicated that the current council was committing this fraud and attempting to slander him, and making his statements that fraud existed, Mr. Wakefield did not have communicated to him from the South Dakota retirement system, the city, the chamber, or Ms. Surick that fraud was committed. Mr. Wakefield did not request the city conduct any investigation and did not obtain any documents. The council finds that Mr. Wakefield's communications that fraud was committed, and that the council was committing a fraud violates the city's code of conduct, specifically subsections two, three, and five D of Brandon Ordinance one dash three dash one-two. On February third, which now is the second one, on February third, two thousand nineteen, Mr. Wakefield made a public post on Facebook account wherein statements were made by him pertaining to respect, authority, and intimidation by then-candidate and now-hired to become our police chief, Joe Weir, and caused Mr. Wakefield to not be voting for him as a new chief. Prior to the post, Mr. Wakefield did not request the city conduct any investigation into conduct that was reported to him by others. The city later conduced an investigation and determined that accusations were not supported. Substantial disruption to the city's operations and public trust of city officials occurred. Mr. Wakefield claims that the post was a personal opinion, not expressed as a council member, however, the post pertained to his official duties as a council member, voting on the hiring of a new police chief. The council finds that Mr. Wakefield's post violates the city's conduct, code of conduct, specifically subsections two, five E, and five J of Brandon Ordinance one dash three dash one-two. The council considers these violations to be significant. It determines that under Brandon Ordinance one dash three dash one-four, a public sanction and formal reprimand is appropriate. In issuing this public sanction and formal reprimand, the council notes that Paul Lundberg and city staff are not part of any of these proceedings. It also notes that Mr. Wakefield was provided with advance notice of the issues, the opportunity to present any witnesses or other evidence, and to be represented by an attorney. The council also notes that the use of social media by the council and public is valuable, with also recognizing that when a council member speaks on a city-related issue, that there is a need for council members' communications to be accurate, noting their ability to obtain facts through city resources to ensure facts are correct and public confidence promoted, and lastly, noting that what is communicated by council members may be perceived by the public as a statement of the city, particularly when the communication does not otherwise contain a comment about a statement being expressed as a private opinion and not one held by the city.
Second. So motion in a second for a public, sub-term, reprimand?
Reprimand.
Sanction. Any further discussion? Call the rule, Christina.
Bastian?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
Fish?
Aye.
Housman?
Aye.
Parsons?
Aye.
And Wakefield and Abstain's? Right? Are you abstaining, Wright, Wakefield?
That's correct.
Motion carries. No further business, I'll look for a motion to adjourn at seven thirty-five.
Second.
Motion to adjourn at seven thirty-five, motion in a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, we are adjourned.
Interesting.